Good night.
Dr. Locken, I'll give you the thumbs up when we're live.
If who's monitoring the feed?
I'm going to do that right now.
You're going to monitor YouTube?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm just signing in right now. Dr. Locken, on your mark, you just say go live and we can.
Okay, go ahead and go live. I'm going to ask for motion to return to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, for roll call vote, Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Palace?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota's?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we're back in open session. I'm going to report out. We discussed current litigation. No votes were taken. I'm going to ask for motion to steal the minutes of executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Ask for roll call vote, Mr. Dakota's?
Yes.
Mrs. Palace? Mrs. Palace?
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, we're voting to steal the minutes.
Ah, yes.
Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
And I vote yes today. I got everybody right? Yeah, all right. So we are back in open session regarding the FY 22 budget. Dr. Sankiony.
Great, thank you, Dr. Locken. And at this point, I remember the committee has received the FY 22 budget book, which is a starting place for us to look at the expenses that the district needs to move forward. We gave you a preliminary presentation last time. We had a meeting. I want to go back to some of those slides just to refresh everyone's memory of where we currently stand and also to make some key points. So David, if you could bring that up. Okay, the PowerPoint I showed you last time had a lot of slides to it. I'm just going to go to some of the most tangible ones that I want to discuss with you this evening. So that being starting right here, our starting place. So as the slide depicts to you, our current operating budget is 33.2 million. And you can see what that is made up of. However, I just want to point out that bottom line, it's in red. To open our budget this year, we also use a million dollars in one-time revenue. And David, if you can go to the next slide. Actually, you can go to the next slide, Dave. I'll come back to that right there. Thank you. And remind the committee that we use 1 point, a million dollars in one-time revenue, which was an exceedingly well-thought-out decision on your part as school committee members. And even by doing that, this was the outcome. And I have to keep returning to this because I think this gets lost in the shuffle. And sometimes people forget our budget request is something frivolous or something that's exorbitant or it's more than what we lost these positions. There's 24 positions here and the school department is feeling this loss this year. Things like the teachers at the high school, the math specialist at the elementary school, the math specialist at the high school and so on. These teachers are no longer with us. We used a million dollars in one-time money just to balance. And so again, that's one of the key points I want to make. So Dave, if you can go back a slide. I also want to remind the school committee that, you know, we throw the term fund balance out there a lot. And the school committee, one of the wisest things I believe you've done is to refurbish and renovate the high school and the middle school. And without those renovations, we wouldn't be able to have opened with in-person instruction this year because the air exchanges in those old buildings would not have made code. But the place we are now allowed us to open. And again, we've been one of the few school systems in the entire state to open pretty quickly and to stay open full in-person instruction K-12. So that investment is paying off in huge dividends. But a point I want to remind the committee though, is that that fund balance money that you used to renovate our buildings also generated a reimbursement. So you paid a $3 million bill. You received $700,000 back, but that money went to the town. And in times where our budget is so compromised, that money, which was once the school committees possibly could be looked at again as why isn't it, you know, part of our budget or could that be part of our budget for FY 22? So it's another point I want to make with you this evening. So Dave, if you can go ahead, another slide there. So again, now we're looking at our FY 22 request. And you can see it starts where we ended in FY 21. And the request we need is the bottom line. It's a 33,981,041 budget. And the point I want to make on this is that request is a level service budget. No new staff, no new programs, no recall of any of the positions we cut. We're not bringing anyone back. And that's the budget number we need. David can go ahead. And I know that number is going to present some problems now. Because we're, well, again, this slide doesn't depict that. But you can see how we got to this level staff budget and the appropriation we need and what was short. And again, showing you our revenue sources that used to be there, things like fund balance and Medicaid are no longer there. Again, Dave, go ahead, one more slide. Okay, nope, go back to where we were. And yeah, this is the slide here. Again, I glossed over quickly. So level staff budget 33.9 million, the town appropriation, the max appropriation can be 33.1. Now we have an asterisk there because we're looking at that and reevaluating the max that that can be from the town. Several people have looked at it. Our numbers are close, but we're not exact yet. So that's why I'm putting that accurate, that asterisk there, but it's close. But here nor there, with a max appropriation from the town, the point, the last point I want to make with the school committee is we are still 851,267,000 dollars short of a level service budget. And so I'll repeat that a level service budget means just doing what we're doing this year. No new programs, no new staff, no callbacks. So I know this is a huge ask, but this has to be achieved through any means possible. If it's not through the budget committee and through the town, then it's something I think we have to strongly start educating our parents and this community about and finding a way to make this budget something we can realize. So with those key points in your mind now that we made, David, bring down the slide so we can see each other and begin the conversation. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open up the for the questions. Elaine, if you're still, Mrs. Pavo may have to leave. Elaine, if you're still with us, I'll give you an opportunity to ask questions or make comments now. You're muted if you can't, but you may be gone. Okay. I'm going to turn the floor over to Mrs. Farnworth. Questions, comments, Dan?
Sure. I think, Peter, your points are well taken. I think though, this committee before we are able to with confidence reach out to the community to ask for a large increase. I think we, it's incumbent upon all of us to fully understand the changes, the increases that you're saying that we absolutely have to have. And I'll just point out a couple of things. And you know, a lot of this, some of this may require some research and coming back to us. But you know, I just want to put a few of these things out there. First of all, the the Blue Cross and Blue Shield help medical and dental. It's a what is it, 7% increase that's projected? I know that last year those increases were not, they, we were originally projecting large increases and it turned out that they were not as large as what initially thought. At what point will we have a better idea? Because I know, you know, we're still six months away from the start of the next fiscal year. At what point do we have a solid understanding of what those medical and premiums are going to be?
Dr. Sankiony, may I answer that?
You may. Thank you.
So Mrs. Farnworth, I've actually reached out to the trust. And they, again, do not have a final prediction as to what the increases are going to be. But for medical, they gave us, they, due to the utilization having gone up in part due to COVID, you know, utilization all the way around, they are anticipating a 6% to 9% increase. And when I reached, I reached back out to them and said, well, last year we had none because Tiverton's utilization was so good. They're like, well, don't count on that for this year. So I sort of, I kind of took a little bit of the middle ground there and projected an increase of 7%. Similar with dental, they said between 3% and 6%. So I did 4% on that. And those are emails specifically from the trust. Although, again, those numbers are not final, but they said do not count on a level premium for 22.
And you know, I just have to point out, I maybe miss me remembering this, but I'm pretty sure that we never have that number much before May.
That's correct, Dr. Mark.
With the whole budget calendar in general. Because the other thing that always tends to bite us that time of year is the transportation costs. So that has sunk or put more than a few holes in the budget in the past. And then you create a structural deficit essentially if you want to preserve services and you're behind the eight ball already for the next year. It's great.
I think too, I need to get a better understanding of what the real budget numbers are for 21. I have here the document that was given to us in October when the final, the final allocation, the final appropriation was made. And at that point, we're saying that this year's health and medical premiums, line 52101, was to be 3.1 million. And the document you gave us in this book is 50,000 less, 60,000, 70,000 less, actually. I'm not sure which document's supposed to be the Bible. Which one are we actually tracking?
Um, so I did for FY 20, the, I'm sorry, FY 21, the one that you received in October should be the one when I populated the FY 21 on the budget, on the FY 22 budget, there were edits to the October document that I did not include. So I would use, I would use the October 1.
Okay, so you'll give us a new one for the book?
Yes, but the total is the same, Mrs. Farnworth.
Yeah, the total is the same. You're right. It is, absolutely. It's just the swings here and there, trying to understand these line items that, you know, as the school committee should. It's, we need to have a clear understanding which numbers are right. The other question I had right off, and I'll also leave room for other committee members to ask additional questions because there's quite a few on here that I could ask. One that stands out is the statewide transportation of 80,000 increase. Can you explain that?
So when I was speaking with the region, as of this year and this year going forward, it used to be that the statewide transportation was included in the out-of-district placements and it was all part of what we paid there. And now we're being billed directly by the state for out-of-district placements. And so in Ride's infinite wisdom, when they were negotiating their transportation contract, they negotiated sort of the clause that says that, you know, they would agree to, I forget what the percentage increase was, but also that, you know, if we were to close down, they would pay 100% of, if we were to close due to COVID, they would pay 100% of of the cost, whether it was utilized or not. So that number is coming to us directly from the state. They underestimated it for FY 21 and they've now shortened getting their program together. And they are anticipating that it's going to go up substantially for FY 22. And I've confirmed that with Sarah and Gina at the region.
Okay. We're going to have to continue talking about this. I'm seeing more discrepancies in the report, so I will yield.
Okay. Elaine, if you're still here, your iPod, my screen is showing your iPod is still in, but I'm guessing you may not be. If you have any questions, please speak up. Ghost iPod. Okay, cool. Mr. Dakota's?
Thank you. Amy, the amount, we're looking at the 4%. My question is, is the 4% in your understanding, is that just for the school committee or is that 4% total with the town? So for instance, the way I understand it, maybe I'm cheating by telling you, I think the answer for you, tell me what you think. But the 4% total increase that we could send up to the state is for the entire town. So when you ask for 4% for the school, how do you get to that 4%?
That's based on the town appropriation to the school.
So for example, if we have, I'm throwing out numbers, we have a budget of 30 million. If 25 of that, if five of that were from the state and 25 million were from the town, the 4% would be based on the 25 million, not the 30.
So it'd be 4% of 25 million, not 4% of 30 million or 57 million or whatever is the total municipal budget?
All right. I just want to make sure because I know that when I talked to Representative Edwards a week and a half ago, so I asked him some questions. I got some, sent me an email with some, basically the law they enacted up at the State House a few years back. And I just was asking about 4%, how they got to 4%. And because I know that every year when I sent a budget committee was the schools, the last couple of years that I'm asking for 4%. But it's the town's appropriation as a whole that's 4%.
Mike, if I, Mike, if I can, it's actually two separate things. So if you look at RIGL 16221, there is a max for the town, but as part of the levy, there's also a piece of that that says the schools may not ask for an appropriation of municipal funds exclusive of state and federal aid in excess of 4%. So there's kind of two pieces. So we take the municipal funds. So we basically take our total appropriation. We back out state aid. That's our municipal number. We take that by 4%. That's the max that we can ask for from municipal. And then we get our state aid because that has to come to us. So that's one calculation for the schools that the General Assembly put a restriction on how much they could ask for. Separate from that, the town has the 4% levy as well. So 4% us that, you know, what we legally can ask for. Once you, once you bring in, you know, extra revenue and, you know, et cetera, that may not be the town, you know, it may not be what the town necessarily will give us to get their 4% max. So there's kind of two separate calculations. We have a, we have the, schools have their own. And if you'll see it at the bottom of that state law, we have our own restrictions. But then there's the town 4% is sort of separate from that. So it's, there's kind of two buckets, if you will.
Make a whole.
Exactly.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Yep. So yeah, 16 to 21 and it's on the bottom.
So if I could kind of gloss that a little bit as well, just to make sure I understand and maybe make it clear to other people. There's, the town in Tiverton has a budget. There really are three big components of that. One of that is the expenditures made by the town government for things like trash collection, plowing, street repairs, all that stuff. That's kind of the towns are oftentimes referred to as the town's budget. Second big component is of course, the school budget that is funded by the town. And that is really the biggest of the three components. And then the third is a pretty significant percentage of the school's overall budget that is state aid. And neither the entire town's budget, so including state aid, including the school budget funded by local revenue and the town's municipal expenditures can go up by a certain percentage. I think it's 4% as well. Corrected? And now, what is the limit for the total town budget?
The total town, school and town, school and municipal is 4%.
Yeah, that's nice. Okay, so that can't go up by 4%.
But that's us together.
Right. But, but also the local levy or the portion of the school's budget that is funded by local taxes cannot go up by 4% as well, correct?
And no, it can, we cannot request.
Can't request more. They can give more.
All right, right.
They can give more as long as it's not over that 4% cap.
For the levy.
For the, the 4% for the total budget or the 4%? So we can't ask for more than 4%? But the town around and say?
We're going to give you more because it doesn't bust our levy cap.
Correct. Okay. It doesn't bust the 4% of the town's budget overall.
Right. Or they can ask for an override of that levy cap if different things happen. So yeah, so that's why I said there's like kind of two pieces to the puzzle. My understanding is the way, the reason they put in specifically the budget adopted and presented by school committees and only sort of limited what you could ask is there was this worry that basically the school's going to come in with a 10% budget and you're going to suck up all of the increase.
Right.
So they, so they sort of put that. But again, Diane's right. We can, we could, we are limited to what we request, but the town is not limited to what they can give as long as it's within that 4% cap.
Of the total entire budget of the town of Tiverton.
Levy.
But the increase in the tax levy.
An increase in the levy.
Right, okay.
Which is not an increase in the budget. It's the increase in the levy.
Right, right. So, so you can still, so, so, so see, you can do this for eight years and still not really always have it straight. Anyway. So, Mike, I think you actually had the floor. So anything else?
No, I appreciate that. And I'm only asking because I'm trying to make sure I learn it. And you would think two years in the budget committee, it would be ingrained in my head. But when you look at one side versus the other side, it's easier when you look at them both together. Just trying to figure out how they separate and how they come together. That was my question.
I'm becoming more confident as the years go by that actually nobody understands the budget in Tiverton. And I mean, nobody, even God. So because God would never have designed such a thing. Perhaps Satan does. Anyway, all right, and I go on. Deb, questions, comments?
Um, I have just some general comments about the slides, but I think for sake of expediency, Peter, I'll just send those to you.
Thanks, Deb.
Just about consistency and stuff. The slide that you showed, my local contribution and state aid don't match what you're showing. But again, I'll just, I'll send that to you. And I think it, I think it ties in with that max calculation. So once we get an agreement on that, I think that'll, that'll fix that. I just wanted to confirm this. There are no salary increases in here?
Only lanes and steps. There are none.
Right. There are no cost of living, whatever we want to call them.
Correct.
Thank you. Um. I guess too, there's a couple of things that, additional information that I'd like to see. For the fund balance roll forward, could we get the, Peter, to your point of what we spent, could we see the role for the last four years?
Absolutely. Yep. We have that.
Yep. No, I, yeah. And it's just, you know, it's helpful to look it over, over it again and say, okay, where did that money go? Because you constantly hear, oh, but you had 4 million. Yeah, yeah. No, we know.
I can get you that tomorrow.
Well, you could just put it, what I think, I think, once we kind of, once we correct things and we fix the max and we, and Diane, to Diane's point, when, you know, you fixed the, she said, you said you thought things needed to be corrected on the operating expenses, I'm assuming we're going to get a new budget book. Correct, Peter?
Yeah, once we make all the adjustments, we will redo it.
So you don't have to send it to me early, just sort of if we, if, you know, if we can get it just whenever we, you guys get to a new budget book, that's fine.
I think this should be an agenda topic on a future, if the school committee agrees. I think this is worth showing the community that this money was well-spent. It's not that it's, it's just been frivolous or anything like that. I mean, these schools would not be open today unless you renovated those two buildings.
And I think, Peter, I sent you that historical chart that we've used in the past.
Yep, that was correct.
Yep, that would be worth probably just thrown in for discussion. The other thing about, I guess, the specifics, we, I see we don't have the sped detail. I know you emailed us and said that's coming. Is I would like to see, and I don't know what other people think, and I think Diane, this was maybe to your point, on this, this two-page Yukoa detail, I would like to see all of them thrown in for actual FY 20. Because I think that, I don't want to see actual 20 and then show a variance, just a column on what the totals were. Because I think it helps to Diane's point, it helps us to see trends. Would that be a problem?
Nope.
No, just, yep, just throw in, just one column. I don't want to see the variance. I, you know, I just want to be able to sort of run my fingers down and see, you know, sort of, okay, here's 20, here's 21, here's 22. It'll just sort of show me the trend. And Diane sort of asked some of the accounts that, that I wanted to look at. So I don't know, like tuition to other school districts, that 464 or some of the tech numbers, how do you want to go about, like, if, like, what's the backup behind that? What's the detail? Do you want to just discuss it and just kind of tell us? Or do you want us to send these things so that you have an opportunity to make sure you have it?
Yeah, Deb, if you could send it, that'd be good. You know, specifically to the tech, you have a presentation coming up on transportation technology and special education by Dave, Sarah and Amy on.
Oh, okay.
I'm the 26th.
So that'll tie into what we see here then. Correct. Okay. So in that case, obviously, you know, I wouldn't need it. Tuition to other school districts, is that, that, is that going to be part of sped or is that something outside of that? Yes, okay. So those were mine. So that's coming. And like I said, I have some, I have some comments just sort of outside of, you know, this, that, you know, I'll just send to you. But I think the budget, my question is, when? So you need to get, when do you have to have detail to the budget committee? Not till March?
In March.
So we have a deficit between what, 800 and or more, depending upon what that max calc is. So.
That presumes we are awarded the 4% increase from the town.
Correct. So I mean, at some point, once we get that max number and we all agree on what that is, at some point, we're, we need to show, well, to Diane's point, we need to get comfortable with the 33,981. We need to make sure that's a good number. That's step one. Once we're like, okay, we're comfortable, and I'm sure it is. But once we're comfortable with it, because we have to defend it. Once we're like, okay, we're comfortable and I'm sure it is, but once we're comfortable with it because we have to defend it, then the next step is, okay, here's the max and here's the potential deficit. Does everyone agree that we're at some point going to have to say, if we have to close that deficit, we're going to need from Peter and his team what that would mean?
I, I think you're right, Deb, and I think the sooner we start talking about this, the better. Um, because I, no matter how you slice it, this coming budget, um, it's, I, I don't see any way around additional cuts. So, you know, we, we really need to scrutinize the, the budget you're putting forward to see if there's any way we can bring it down. And then we have to seriously start talking about the impacts. Is it? Is it simply staff cuts? Is it closing down a building? Is it, you know, what is it? Is it looking for new funding sources that we haven't even encountered in the past that'll be significant enough to make a difference? There, there's so many things and I'm glad we're starting to talk about it in detail here in January. Because I think it's going to be a fun couple of months for us to, to get to that final, um, budget request.
Well, and then I think.
The town understands.
Right. And then I think once we see that, we'll be able to make a decision, the five of us, and we may not be in agreement of what, what we want to ask for.
Right.
You know, I know some people have said four, other people have said five. You know, let's ask, you know, if we need five point seven, let's ask for five point seven. So I think, I think that's, you're right, Diane. That's the steps that we need to get to, to, to get to a point. And, and those, and it's a quick process. We only have a couple, you know, we only have a few months. So, um, when do we want to, how do we want to go about making sure we're comfortable with the thirty-three, nine eighty-one?
When's our next meeting?
Next Tuesday.
So next Tuesday, should we just, just to keep us focused, only focus on FY twenty-two's budget and if we, if there's anything in there that we have questions about? But that seems quick to me because you just told me you're going to have presentations on some of those numbers.
On the twenty-sixth.
So we're going to be asking questions about press numbers that still haven't been presented to us.
Yeah, Deb, I think you're fine in asking the questions. I mean, you know, let, let's break it down. Our budget's eighty percent staff, right?
Yep.
And, and the staff is pretty easy, right? We rolled everyone forward, contractual increases, didn't add anyone, put their salary down. Amy did a calculation on benefits. That's eighty percent of your budget right there.
Yep.
You know, the other twenty percent is our best ask on expenses. So I think as you look at those lines and I, I don't know if it was you or Diane asked, I, I think it would be important to show you the nineteen expense numbers, the twenty and no, the twenty, the, the nineteen, twenty and twenty-one numbers there because you, um, another key point, I wish I brought this out today. You know, we made drastic cuts to expenses last year.
Yes.
And so.
That's very true.
That's a good point, Peter. So we might want to see if we, if there's any way to do, maybe, maybe you just do a separate sheet with just four lines and don't have the increases.
Right. I think if you just see the numbers in the.
Just have the numbers right next to each other. That's a really good point.
For, um, before our next meeting as well, if I could ask, um, Amy, I, I, how often are we getting, um, the detailed Medicaid schedule from the region?
Monthly.
Can we please get a copy of the most recent ones?
Certainly.
For the next meeting?
Yep, certainly.
Oh, I did have that question, Diane, since you brought it up. Uh, Amy, you say something about five months in November, so is it, you based it on the first five months and it's twelve months of activity? Or if it's, or is it only five months?
For the seven.
For Medicaid, this, the seventy-five thousand?
Uh, I'm sorry, Deb, I'm not following your question.
So your fund balance just roll forward for Medicaid, you say, add estimated FY twenty-one reimbursements based on five months of activity through November. So is the seventy-four thousand twelve or is it only five?
No, that's twelve months. So I've annualized the five months of activity over twelve.
That's what I just wanted. Thank you.
Okay.
The re, uh, Deb, the reimbursements are very, very small compared to the past couple of years.
Yeah, they're way down. Why, do we know why?
Uh, I don't, but I can certainly find out. I, I believe it has to do with the level of reimbursable services being provided. And, um, I can probably get more detail from the region for you on that.
Yeah, because I mean substantially down.
Correct.
And certainly in the spring, I can see that have, as having been the case. Um, but now that we're back in, I'm wondering why that is.
I, I can certainly find out. Um.
Okay.
Again, I'm not familiar with special education service delivery, so, uh, I can certainly get that information for you.
And, and I don't know, maybe that, if, if, if Amy, if it, it would be like, if that's something Sarah wants to speak to on the twenty-sixth, that's fine too.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine too. Um, but certainly, I mean, if you want to ask and give us your, at least her first take, that's fine. So for our next meeting, that's, are we in agreement? We're going to just focus on this thirty-three, eight ninety-one and get comfortable with that. That's step one. Yes? Yes, okay. So we're going to have that sheet with, uh, we're going to have the one that you gave us, the two pages with the FY twenty. And then we're going to have a separate sheet where, uh, two sheets, I guess, where we're going to have twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty and nineteen.
Yep.
Um, with no, no increases, just the numbers straight down so that we can, that would be great. Um, and we're meeting, when are we meeting?
Next Tuesday.
So if, would it be possible to get those before the weekend, just so that we have a little bit of time to look at it?
Yep.
Okay. Or even, even just, you know, well, I guess I don't want you to work on a Saturday. So if it would be possible to get it, uh, you know, for the weekend, just so that we, or even if we, Monday morning, I don't know about anybody else, but Monday morning would be okay too, just so we have at least a little bit of time to look at it.
Yeah, I'll have it for you before the weekend, Deb. I have the information at hand and it's just a matter of uh, copying and pasting it.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I guess I have the floor now. Um, I don't really have any questions. I guess just a couple of comments. One, it would be really good to have a explication, if you will, of the expenditures from the fund balance and actually what has been returned to the town over the la, I mean, I'd go back five years because there was money that was returned to the town because it was part of our project that had nothing to do with the, the bond and the, and the major renovation of the HVAC and, and roofs. Um, so there's been actually a fairly steady revenue stream back to the town's general fund from, um, money that the schools, uh, that were, that was spent on the schools. That's, and, and, you know, we have done that periodically, but I think going into this budget season, it's going to be pretty important to have that. Um, the second is we certainly would not have opened in the pandemic without having done the renovations. We did, more to the point, we could easily have been closed pandemic or no pandemic on a number of issues that were addressed by the renovation. The kind of most notable one that I can think of off the top of my head is installation of draft walls in the high school. And so, you know, all of the money that was expended in the, it was projects was for health and safety, which is why they were enabled for reimbursement, but also could have been grounds for us having been closed by the fire marshal or the department of health or, uh, I guess other entities. Um, at any time, there were, there were some significant, um, deficits in the structure of the, or in the, the plant of the, the high school and the middle school. The only thing that, you know, may have, was not necessarily health and safety, where the ceiling tiles, which we got at cost through our contractor and some of the lighting, which, um, should pay for itself over the course of five to 10 years. So again, when, when there's discussion of the, um, fund balance and what happened to it and, uh, you know, the explicit directives we had from both the sitting budget committees and town councils about trying to pay that down a bit to, to do these renovations and fund our own capital. Those things have to be acknowledged before any other discussion occurs about the fund balance. Uh, and I say that, I guess with a little bit of peccy because, uh, that's not always acknowledged by some of the people who speak about those issues. Um, and certainly we would not have been open during the pandemic if we had not done those things. Second thing I think we also need to acknowledge is that we have cut our non, um, payroll expenses to the bone. There is no room there to cut anything. So any uh, shortfalls that have to be made up in the budget are coming out of people. That's, that's the way it is. Um, so as long, as soon as we acknowledge that, I think the, um, uh, the sooner people will understand the, uh, the bind we are in and the consequences of, uh, not being able to fund the schools adequately. The third thing that I think is really important to also, I can understand, we were closing with some of those cuts, structural deficits which had occurred for a variety of different reasons. Um, but what we really inherited from the last fiscal year is a structural deficit of our contractual obligations under the contracts executed with our, um, NEA employees and our council ninety-four employees. So the contracts that ran out in the last fiscal year um, were not funded in this fiscal year at all. So, uh, and I, I don't think you need to look even any further than that, actually, to understand why, even with a four percent increase, we are going to have a significant shortfall. There's one other point, but I can't remember what it was. So, uh, you know, I think we will be well advised to devote the next, the meeting next week to really, uh, finally nailing, you know, to making sure we are comfortable with those numbers so that we are, um, well informed and can, uh, make the public well informed as well as the budget committee and the school committee or the town council when we meet with them on the fourteenth. So that is all I have to say. Uh, Dave, D, is there any questions or comments from the public if you're monitoring YouTube?
Uh, currently there are no comments or questions.
Okay. I'll wait for Facebook, I guess. All right. So, um, any other comments or questions from, uh, the school committee on the budget as it stands right now?
Um, I do have one. And will, when will we be talking about the capital requests?
Peter?
Well, that you have them in your budget book. It was part of our initial presentation. So, um, really, we could put it on the agenda for next meeting if you'd like.
Okay.
So. Good idea to do that.
So we'll focus on the detail of the two-page report and the capital request.
Okay.
And, and I think we had it in our budget book. Did we have the five-year?
Yes, it's in your budget book.
That's, I thought I saw it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I think that ends our agenda of old business and new business. So we are up to item six, uh, which was, uh, school committee training with attorney, attorney scunjo. We have scheduled that for the fourteenth at six P M. Before the joint committee with the, uh, joint meeting with the town council and budget committee. And then we're up to announcements, schedules, scheduled meetings and reports. So we're meeting on the twelfth and on the twenty-sixth and on the fourteenth. I should say the twelfth, the fourteenth and the twenty-sixth.
What time?
Uh, so the twelfth is next Tuesday. Peter, can you tell us again where your thoughts are with the, other than the budget? But, and you said, since, I think there were some policy second readings.
Yep. We need an executive session with our, um, with the attorney from the trust.
Do we need an hour or can we do exec at like six thirty?
Well, we could do executive as soon as you like, early six o'clock if you like, like we did tonight.
Yeah, but if we, we get finished in a half hour, then we just sit around waiting for open. Or, or, or we didn't do that. Do we just post it that open starts immediately following?
That's why I'll be posted now.
Oh, perfect.
I would, I would like to, um, just make my opinion known on that. I would like to have the public sessions started at consistent time so that the public can rely upon what time to log in and not have to wait. Um, that's my opinion and I will continually back that opinion.
Yeah, I, if I could say that, I, I echo that as well. So being someone that's watched a lot of meetings, uh, gone to meetings, sat a lot around. I, I think it's also respectful of, uh, the public, especially as we get marching through a budget season that we could do the executives after. That's just my opinion.
Oh, I don't like to do exec after. We, we're, we're toast and you're doing some of the most important things that you do. Um, I have no problem starting them early, but doing them after we, I, I don't, I mean, that's just my opinion. This committee, we, we've had some, it's, it's really, really hard to do them after. And it's some of the more important issues, you know, that you're dealing with and, and you're, you're toast after a two, three-hour, you know, meeting. And I know, I know lots of committees certainly do it that way, but, um, if we, you know, and I don't mind having an executive at six and staying our open, our, that our open session starts at seven. We've done that before.
And if we need to continue executive.
Later, then we've at least done an hour of it before.
Yeah.
Right. So, um, it's just going to be from, uh, a meeting with, uh, Mark D'Assisto. Is that right, Peter?
Yeah, and I believe you could post for six thirty then open it. I don't believe this would take more than a half hour. I could say that with confidence.
Yeah, we can use some common sense.
You know, yeah, exactly. And I, I think post open for seven, if we run over five minutes, I think the public.
That's not horrible. Right.
Even though I've often said this is the town of no second chances and no forgiveness, but, um, I think they'll give us a second chance on that one.
So.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Nope, Diane, I was just going to confirm what you just said, which is we're going to make sure we post by time we're going to open.
Right.
Hmm. Um, I would also like to mention that we have a policy subcommittee meeting, uh, next Monday, the eleventh.
Okay, great. Just announcing it. Okay.
Yep, that's it.
All right. Anything else?
Oh, one more. Just to remind everyone that the newly elected leader's presentation by the Hassan Feld Institute is this coming uh, Friday and Saturday, if you haven't signed up.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and do that. All right. Anything else?
It's Friday and Saturday, Diane?
Starts Friday at two.
Oh, okay. I signed up. I just, I just didn't.
Saturday morning.
Oh, okay. I did, I signed up. I just didn't catch that it was two days. Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Peter, do we know that, um, Thursday, the fourteenth, from the email we got from Town Clark, that's definitely going to be the meeting at seven o'clock, right?
That's been posted.
That's posted, right?
My understanding, yeah. All right. I'm going to ask your motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second.
Any opposed? Speak now.